Good evening. The thirty-ninth meeting of the seventh third term of your Baltimore City Council is now called to order. As a reminder, for members of the press and members of our community, if you could please ensure that your phones are on silence so we do not disrupt the meeting. Our invocation this evening will be delivered by Reverend Robert Young of Wayland Baptist Church. Reverend Young, thank you so much for joining us today. The floor is yours.
May we pray. Holy One, Spirit of love, the Spirit of community, Spirit of justice, we ask your blessings on the people who have been called to lead this city in which we live, work, and play. Grant them and us the wisdom and courage to know and to do what is right and good and true. May they and we speak out when it is time to speak out and listen patiently and receptively. May they and we always be guided by the Spirit of community, justice, and love. This we pray in the name of all that we hold sacred, holy, all that we hold good and true, in your name, amen.
Amen. At this time, we will stake the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reverend Young, thank you so much for that amazing invocation. Truly appreciate it. At this time, Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
President Mosby, Councilmember Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos. Mr. President, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, I ask the Journal Clerk to reflect that Councilmember James Torrance is absent and is excused. At this time, we will now proceed to the adoption of the Journal.
Mr. President, the Journal at the August fifteenth, twenty twenty-two proceedings are on the Councilmember's desk.
Without objection, the Journal will be adopted. Hearing and seeing none, the Journal is now adopted. Bill signed by the American be found at the beginning of page two of tonight's agenda. We'll now turn to bills to be introduced. Madam Clerk, if you could please read the first bill.
City Council Bill Twenty-two dash zero two six six, sale of property, twelve hundred North Fremont Avenue, for the purpose of authorizing the mayor and City Council of Baltimore to sell at either public or private sale all its interests in certain property that is located at twelve hundred North Fremont Avenue, block forty-six, lot one, and is no longer needed for public use and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor is President Mosby on behalf of the administration.
As discussed at the council luncheon, we have several sale of properties. My office will send around to the councilmembers a list of those properties, the district, as well as the intended use. This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means Committee. Madam Clerk?
City Council Bill Twenty-two dash zero two six seven, sale of property, sixteen thirty North Patterson Park Avenue, for the purpose of authorizing the mayor and City Council of Baltimore to sell at either public or private sale all its interests in certain property that is located at sixteen thirty North Patterson Park Avenue, block fourteen seventy-one, lot nineteen A, and is no longer needed for public use and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor is President Mosby on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means Committee. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill Twenty-two dash zero two six eight, sale of property, eight hundred Poplar Grove Street, for the purpose of authorizing the mayor and City Council of Baltimore to sell at either public or private sale all its interests in certain property that is located at eight hundred Poplar Grove Street, block twenty-four seventy-one, lot one, and is no longer needed for public use and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor is President Mosby on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means Committee. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill Twenty-two dash zero two six nine, sale of property, three oh one North Pulaski Street, for the purpose of authorizing the mayor and City Council of Baltimore to sell at either public or private sale all its interests in certain property that is located at three oh one North Pulaski Street, block zero one four six, lot one, and is no longer needed for public use and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor is President Mosby on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means Committee. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bills Twenty-two dash zero two seven zero, sale of property, fifty-five forty-five Kennison Avenue, for the purpose of authorizing the mayor and City Council of Baltimore to sell at either public or private sale all its interests in certain property that is located at fifty-five forty-five Kennison Avenue, block eighty-one ninety, lot fifteen, and is no longer needed for public use and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor is President Mosby on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been signed to Ways and Means Committee. Madam Clerk?
City Council Bill Twenty-two dash zero two seven one, sale of property, eleven oh one Winston Avenue, for the purpose of authorizing the mayor and City Council of Baltimore to sell at either public or private sale all its interests in certain property that is located at eleven oh one Winston Avenue, block fifty-one eighty-eight, lot four, and is no longer needed for public use and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor is President Mosby on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means Committee. Madam Clerk?
City Council Bill Twenty-two dash zero two seven two, sale of property, twenty-three thirty-three East Chase Street, for the purpose of authorizing the mayor and City Council of Baltimore to sell at either public or private sale all its interests in certain property that is located at twenty-three thirty-three East Chase Street, block fifteen seventy-two, lot thirty-six, and is no longer needed for public use and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor is President Mosby on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means Committee. Madam Clerk?
City Council Bill Twenty-two dash zero two seven three, sale of property, thirty-seven fifty Greenspring Avenue, for the purpose of authorizing the mayor and City Council of Baltimore to sell at either public or private sale all its interests in certain property that is located at thirty-seven fifty Greenspring Avenue, block thirty-two twenty-seven E, lot one, and is no longer needed for public use and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor is President Mosby on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means Committee. Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, if we could go to Twenty-two dash two seven four, Madam Clerk?
City Council Bill Twenty-two dash zero two seven four, water bills right to review for the purpose of requiring the Department of Public Works to provide a customer with a copy of a certain water bill upon request and submission of specified documentation. Sponsor is Councilmember Burnett and Councilmember Bullock.
The body would like to recognize the sponsor of this bill. And gentlemen from the eighth district, Councilmember Burnett, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, this bill is pretty straightforward. As it currently stands, if you are a renter in Baltimore City and you want to get a detailed copy of your water bill, you have to get permission, get access through your landlord. And we've had instances in my office where constituents have reached out wanting detailed information on payment schedules, on usage, and have been denied access by both their landlord and by DPW. This would, if passed by the council, would open that up so that regardless if you're a property owner or renter, you can access your bill. It's pretty straightforward, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. At this time, are there any questions or folks would like to sign on? I see the hand raised of Councilman Cohen, Councilwoman Porter, Councilman Glover, Councilwoman Odette, Councilwoman Dorsey, Chair Conway, Vice President Green Middleton. I believe that's all the names. Thank you so much. At this time, this bill will be assigned to Rules and Oversight Committee. Madam Clerk?
City Council Bill Twenty-two dash zero two seven five, ethics conforming changes for the purpose of updating the city ethics article to conform to state law. Sponsor is President Mosby on behalf of the administration.
Just for edification of the body and to the general public, this is just a good governance standard of being in alignment with state as it relates to the ethics regulations when they pass on the state level to ensure that we are in alignment here in city government as well. This bill has been assigned to Rules and Oversight Committee. Madam Clerk?
City Council Bill Twenty-two dash zero two seven six, zoning conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R eight zoning district variances twenty-seven twenty-two.
Agintorali.
Agintorali Terrace, for the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R eight zoning district on the property known as twenty-seven twenty-two Agintorali Terrace, block three-two-two-nine, lot thirty, as outlined in red on the accompanying plat and granting variances from certain bulk regulations, lot area size, and required off-street parking requirements. Sponsor is Councilmember Torrance.
This bill has been assigned to Economic Community Development Committee. Madam Clerk?
City Council Bill Twenty-two dash zero two seven seven, landmark list Reed Callaway House, for the purpose of designating the Reed Callaway House, thirteen sixteen North Carey Street, as an historical landmark exterior. Sponsor is Councilmember Torrance.
This bill has been assigned to Economic Community Development. Madam Clerk?
City Council Bill Twenty-two dash zero two seven eight, vacant structures required safeguarding for the purpose of amending the Baltimore City Building Code to require that vacant structures in Baltimore City be kept secured with doors and windows. Sponsor is Councilmember Burnett and Bullock.
The body would like to recognize gentleman from the eighth district.
Mr. President, and so the effort of this bill is to try and strengthen blocks that are otherwise strong. In short, if a block has over seventy percent occupancy, properties that are not vacant, this would require the owner, be it city or private ownership, the vacant property to have to put functioning windows and doors. This was used as a tactic in Philadelphia with some success. And I think with some, you know, strong dialogue and communication in committee, we can try and make this work. Do have a meeting set up with the HCD as well to talk about the city side of this because obviously there may be some costs with that. But otherwise, I think it's a great way to strengthen communities and preserve communities from becoming destabilized by the proliferation of vacant properties. With that, looking forward to a good discussion in committee, Mr. President.
Thank you for your interest in this topic. That bill has been assigned to Rules and Oversight Committee. Now, we're gonna... Oh, I'm so sorry. I see the hand raised of Councilman Cohen, Councilwoman Ramos, Councilwoman Porter, Councilman Dorsey, Chairman Conway. Thank you for that, if that could be noted as co-sponsors. Again, that bill has been assigned to Rules and Oversight Committee. We will now move to resolutions to be introduced for the first reading. Madam Clerk, if you could please read the first resolution.
City Council Resolution Twenty-two dash zero one two eight R, investigational hearing, emergency rental assistance program, for the purpose of inviting representatives from the Baltimore City Sheriff's Office, the District Court of Maryland for Baltimore City, the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success, and other interested parties to brief the City Council on the use of emergency rental assistance program funds in Baltimore City, including a conversation on the declination of ERAP funds for management companies and private landlords in Baltimore City. Sponsors are Councilmember Burnett and Bullock.
Gentlemen from the eighth district, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, the emergency rental assistance program came to fruition during the height of the COVID-19 pandemic, and all of us saw the impact of the pandemic on people's ability to stay in their homes, to pay rent. And this body, obviously, under your leadership, Mr. President, took up a lot of issues related to that throughout the time that we've been in this term to try and continue to stabilize communities. I did think it was helpful to have a conversation about the current status of the program, any backlogs that exist, as well as we've had a number of instances in which property owners or landlords were refusing to take the funds for whatever reason. And so, that's created some challenges for people and just thought it would be helpful for the council to look into this further. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Are there any co-sponsors? I see the hand raised of Councilman Dorsey, Councilwoman Ramos, Councilwoman Porter, Councilman Glover, Councilman Cohen. That bill has been, that resolution has been assigned to ECD as well. Madam Clerk, one-two-nine R.
City Council Resolution Twenty-two dash zero one-two-nine R, informational hearing, three-one-one requests for tenants facing chronic mold, for the purpose of inviting the Commissioner of the Department of Housing and Community Development, the Executive Director of the Housing Authority of Baltimore City, the Health Commissioner, the Head of Baltimore City's three-one-one services, and other interested parties to appear before the City Council to discuss the number of three-one-one requests received from tenants facing chronic mold problems in their homes, the number of complaints from tenants of public housing, and the number from tenants of private landlords. The demographics of those making the complaints, if known, how such requests are managed, and how the city can better address and respond to reports of chronic mold in housing. Sponsors are Councilmember Burnett and Bullock.
At this time, I would like to recognize gentleman from the eighth district, Councilman Burnett, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, the issue of mold is a critical public health issue in Baltimore City. I'd say with similar impact and proliferation as lead paint, asbestos, it's up there, especially the health impacts related to respiratory illnesses among people who are residing in communities or in houses that have heavy mold presence. It is something that the city hasn't really, in my opinion, done a, had a strong response to. We get a lot of calls from folks, sending photos, sending emails with, I mean, unbelievable amounts of molds in their home. And often, their plight isn't really responded to adequately in the court system because our code enforcement inspectors are not able to certify that that is mold present. We can see the spores, we can see the dark spots everywhere, and maybe leaking water or sewage water, but they're not able to confirm that. So, a lot of times, people do not know where to go or how to resolve these issues on their own. And I thought it would be a helpful hearing to get a snapshot of how widespread this challenge is and to discuss among the council potential solutions, how we can move forward and protect people from this crisis. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Are there co-sponsors? I see the hand raised of Councilman Dorsey, Councilwoman Ramos, Councilwoman Porter, Councilman Cohen. Thank you for bringing that. This bill has been assigned to HET. Madam Clerk?
City Council Resolution Twenty-two dash zero one-three-zero, informational hearing, routine maintenance of city-owned lots and buildings, for the purpose of inviting representatives from the Department of Housing and Community Development, the Department of Planning, the Department of Transportation, the Office of the Comptroller, the Department of Real Estate, the Department of Recreation and Parks, the Department of Public Works, the Department of General Services, and other interested parties to discuss the current condition of city-owned lots and buildings, how maintenance of such properties can be improved, and the impact poorly maintained city-owned lots and buildings have on Baltimore City as a whole. Sponsor is Councilmember Burnett and Bullock.
We're gonna turn to our shyest councilmember of the night, Councilman Burnett. The floor is yours again.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, this one is exactly what it sounds. I think it's important to talk about city-owned properties, whether they're commercial, vacant lots, vacant or unoccupied properties. The maintenance continues to come up time and time again from our constituents' concern whether those properties are impacting theirs, that they aren't, meaning, you know, if it's a vacant lot, it's not being mowed properly, or in some instances where there may be damage to a privately owned occupied home by a city-owned vacant, and much in the same way that we see the same thing with privately owned vacants as well. And so, thought it would be, again, a helpful topic for us to discuss and come up with solutions on how we can better maintain properties and figure out what other resources the HCD and other agencies may need to do a better job on that front. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. At this time, are there any co-sponsors to this resolution? See the hand raised of Councilwoman Ramos, Councilwoman Porter, Councilman Cohen. Thank you so much. This bill has been assigned to... Public Safety and Government Operations. At this time, Madam Clerk, if you could please read in one-three-one R.
City Council Resolution Twenty-two dash zero one-three-one R, informational hearing, animal abuse, for the purpose of inviting representatives from the Baltimore Police Department, Baltimore City Health Department, the Office of Animal Control, Baltimore Animal Rescue and Care Shelter, the Department of Public Works, and the Department of Housing and Community Development to brief the City Council on the city's current resources, protections, and capabilities to address and mitigate animal abuse, as well as the role and responsibilities of the Anti-Animal Abuse Advisory Commission. Sponsor is Councilwoman Porter.
Body would like to recognize the gentlewoman from the tenth district.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. So, Baltimore's anti-abuse efforts are chronically underfunded and understaffed, leading to rampant problems, including inadequate investigation and poor conditions for captured streets. The Department of Animal Control is in urgent need of assistance and reform. Within twelve years of the removing of this, with the removal of this commission, it seems that we are no closer to making the changes we are so desperately need. Regularly, my offices, my office receives messages from concerned citizens asking what more can be done to keep their streets and families safe after they have called animal control, the police, and local shelters. This directly impacts not only, not only our childrens, but also our park spaces as well, as we have received confirmed accounts of animals actually biting individuals and or children on parks as well. So, I look forward to the discussion of this resolution. I hope that we can come to some sort of consensus and action items moving forward from the Animal Control Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I see the hand raised of Chairman Stokes, Councilman Burnett, Councilman Cohen. Thank you so much. This bill has been assigned to HET as well. Madam Clerk?
City Council Resolution Twenty-two dash zero one-three-two R, informational hearing, Johns Hopkins University Police Department and Baltimore City Police Department Memorandum of Understanding, for the purpose of inviting the President of Johns Hopkins University, Vice President for Public Safety for the Johns Hopkins University, the Baltimore City Police Commissioner, and relevant members of their staff to brief the City Council on the proposed memorandum of understanding between the Johns Hopkins University Police Department and the Baltimore City Police Department, including a discussion of the enabling state legislation. Sponsor is Councilmember Ramos.
Councilwoman Ramos, the floor is yours. Councilwoman Ramos, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. This is a resolution for a hearing regarding the draft MOU, which has not been presented yet, between the Baltimore Police Department and Johns Hopkins University to establish the Johns Hopkins University Police Department. In two thousand and eighteen, Senate Bill Seven-eighty-nine was passed in the General Assembly. This bill authorized the establishment of the Johns Hopkins University Police. This would be a private police force with an agreement between JHPD, between BPD and JHU on training, powers, communication protocols, and more. The law also established boundaries that JHU police can go in and around the Homewood Campus, East Baltimore Hospital, Peabody Conservatory campuses only, and they're only authorized a hundred officers. Once the draft MOU is released this month, there are three public hearings sponsored by JHU to get feedback. The state allows for the Baltimore City Council to comment on the MOU. In order for us to comment, I'm introducing this hearing to ensure that we have full information to make our comments. It is no secret that I have been opposed to JHU police for various reasons. This hearing, it's very important to me that this hearing is simply a time to share all of the information, including state law and what it allows, the MOU itself, and BPD's comments, as well as JHU. The City Council has no power to vote on this MOU as it stands now, but it's very important to me that we get all the information. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. At this time, are there any additional co-sponsors? See the hand raised of Councilman Glover, Councilman Cohen, Councilman Burnett, Councilman Dorsey. This has been assigned to Rules and Oversight. Madam Clerk, if you go to one-three-three R.
City Council Resolution Twenty-two dash zero one-three-three R, request for city action, calling for Dr. Sonia Santelisius and the Baltimore City Public School System to implement restorative practices, for the purpose of calling upon the CEO of the Baltimore City Public School System, Dr. Sonia Santelisius, the Chief of Schools, John Davis, and the Board of School Commissioners to create an expedited plan to implement foundational restorative practices, training in all city schools before the end of the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three school year. Sponsor is Councilmember Cohen.
At this time, I would like to recognize gentleman from first district, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Jeremiah Broadton is just the latest young person that we have lost in the city to gun violence. Our children are crying out for help in every community. We see unnecessary conflicts that escalate from something small, often onto social media, and then, because there are so many guns in our community, often end with bloodshed and gun violence. It does not have to be this way. Baltimore was a pioneer in creating restorative practices, a set of practices that emphasizes conflict resolution, de-escalation, and accountability, mutual accountability. We were one of the first cities to implement restorative practices, and we need to be the city that implements it all across our district. Students, teachers, parents, every stakeholder group has rallied together in support of having restorative practices at every single city school. Currently, we have about fifty-three that are split between social and emotional learning and restorative practices. Now is the time for us to scale up. We talk a lot about data and evidence. This is an evidence-based practice. Johns Hopkins University studied restorative practices in fifteen city schools, and they found a forty-four percent reduction in suspensions and a corresponding improvement in climate across those fifteen schools. Now is the time for us to send a message to city schools to partner, to do the work together, but to make sure that across Baltimore City, our young people are being taught that there are healthy ways to end conflict that do not end with violence, and that together we need to make sure we are restoring, supporting, and maintaining the dignity of our children. Mr. President, I move to suspend the rules for media adoption.
Thank you. Without objection, the rules will be suspended. Hearing and seeing none, the rules are suspended. Councilman Cohen, the floor is yours.
Mr. President, I move the resolution.
Thank you for that. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
President Mosby, Councilmember Cohen.
Aye.
McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
The motion is approved. The resolution has been adopted. Madam Clerk?
City Council Resolution Twenty-two dash zero one-three-four R, informational hearing, two thousand and twenty-two Labor Day weekend E. coli positive test and Baltimore City Government's response, for the purpose of inviting the city administrator, the director of the Department of Public Works, the director of the Office of Emergency Management, the Baltimore City Health Commissioner, the mayor's senior director of communications, and representatives from the mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement, to appear before the City Council to discuss the E. coli discovered in the city's water system on or before Labor Day weekend, two thousand and twenty-two, and to detail a complete timeline of events that have transpired up to the date of this informational hearing regarding testing results, notifications to the city administration, and notification to city residents. Sponsors are Chair Costello, Councilmember Bullock, Torrance, Chair McCray, Chair Schleifer, Councilmember Burnett, Porter, Cohen, Ramos, and Vice President Middleton.
At this time, I would like to recognize Chair Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. At the beginning of the E. coli contamination event, there was unclear and inconsistent communication coming from the administration. The first positive test was on Saturday afternoon. A subsequent test to ensure there was not a false positive occurred on Sunday afternoon. DPW issued a series of tweets around seven-thirty in the morning on Monday, Labor Day, and then went dark for approximately nine hours. Clear and consistent communication at the beginning of any emergency event is critically important to ensure that residents are informed and understand what's going on. In addition to the low-resolution graphic map that they published on the website, residents were confused across the board. For example, on Tuesday, residents in the low-rises at McCullough Homes had not yet been informed by Housing Authority of Baltimore City that they were in a boil-water advisory or BWA zone because DPW had informed them that they were not when they in fact were. To the credit of HABC, their president, Janet Abrahams, was able to get text messages out to all residents in McCullough Homes low-rises within a half an hour. Within an hour and a half, she had individuals canvassing the entire neighborhood, and another hour and a half later, water was delivered to all six hundred and sixty residential units in McCullough Homes low-rises. The following morning, I was informed by multiple senior buildings that are in the eleventh district but were outside of the boil-water advisory zone, that they were concerned that they had not received water. I had explained to them, as well as management, that they were outside of the BWA. Unfortunately, the Health Department had called them and inadvertently advised them that they were inside of the BWA when they in fact were not. This, of course, created a great deal of concern for thousands of senior citizen residents that live in the eleventh district. Later that evening, I was informed by the president of towns at the terraces in northeast Poppleton that the management company had informed residents that they were in the BWA when in fact they were not, and their water was in fact safe to drink. This apparently happened because DPW didn't bother to reach out to management companies that manage Hope Six communities or scattered site affordable housing in the city. I understand we're gonna be having a hearing on Thursday afternoon at two. I want to thank my colleague Chairman Schleifer for so quickly agreeing to schedule that hearing in such a timely fashion. Look forward to learning more about the timeline of every single milestone that occurred during this water contamination event, as well as understanding exactly what was done to ensure that the water is safe within the impact area and that this does not happen again. With that, I wanted to, if I may, Mr. President, defer to my colleague Councilman Bullock from the ninth district, who had the entirety of the immediate impact area within his district. Thank you, Mr. President.
At this time, the floor is yielded to Councilmember Bullock. Councilmember Bullock, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Chairman Costello. As you know, this was a public health crisis, and we know that it was a challenging time for our district, particularly for our seniors and our very vulnerable populations. And quite frankly, although social media can be a good tool, it's probably not the best tool to use at that particular point in time. I also share this as not only the representative of the ninth district, but also one who's raising children. You see my sons. And we think about, you know, this, what that meant in terms of us parents who are dealing with young people in terms of health and safety and how we're all affected by it. Also, do want to thank our colleagues. Pretty much everyone around this room called, reached out, did what they could, volunteered, helped distribute water, again, shared information. All of that was so important. But the purpose of this hearing is really about solutions, about trying to find answers to the questions we're asking, but also about these solutions. And again, I really do appreciate everything that everyone has really done along with us. I know there was a lot of confusion. There was a lot of delays. I know we wish we'd gotten better information earlier on, I wish we could have communicated that. But again, this is a really great opportunity for us to then do this in a public fashion. So, again, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Chairman Costello. I also say, you know, Councilwoman Porter, I know part of her area was affected, I know Councilman Torrance as well. I know a lot of you really just really cared about this from a health and human safety perspective. So, again, thank you for it.
No, thank you. Thank you, Chair Costello, for bringing this forward. At this time, are there any additional co-sponsors? Go ahead.
Mr. President, I mistakenly said two o'clock for the hearing. It's actually one o'clock. I apologize for that.
All right. He's gonna call it later. I think we have the hand raised of Chairman Stokes, Chairman Conway, any additional co-sponsors. I think that, you know, obviously, and Councilman Glover, you know, obviously, when times like this come about, you know, it's unity and leadership that's needed, particularly amongst us, whether you're in the district, whether it's affecting your district or not. Clearly, Councilman Bullock was in ground zero of a very scary situation for several days. As he stated, you know, in talking to many of you throughout that process, you roll up your sleeves, whether you're coming from northeast Baltimore or wherever in the city, to help and give out support. I know that Chairman Costello, I'm not sure if he slept as it relates to his food distribution in his district, I'm sorry, water distribution in his district. So again, thank you to each and every one of you for us not looking at it from an individual perspective, but collectively coming together as a council to ensure that we were getting to our constituents as much as possible. With that said, the hearing will be called later on, but it has been assigned to rules and oversight. Next up, 22-135. Madam Clerk.
City Council Resolution 22-0135R, informational hearing code enforcement non-residential property for the purpose of inviting representatives from the Department of Housing and Community Development Code Enforcement Division and the Department of Planning Division of Community Planning and Revitalization to provide data detailing code violations of non-residential properties, including unoccupied vacant and abandoned structures, a review of licensing and registration requirements for unoccupied vacant and abandoned non-residential properties, data demonstrating whether unoccupied vacant and abandoned non-residential properties are complying with city code registration requirements, and provide guidance about how to address long-term vacancies and non-residential properties. Sponsors are Councilmember Porter, Ramos, and Bullock.
I would like to recognize Councilwoman Porter. The floor is yours.
Thank you, sir. Many commercial corridors were experiencing vacant property at one point or another. This is not cause for concern. Well, this is cause for concern, excuse me. What is cause for concern is also the rise in costs and difficulties that continuously vacant and abandoned properties place on communities. Research links foreclosed, vacant and abandoned properties reduced property values, increased crime, increased risk to public health and welfare, and increased costs for municipal governments. We must hold absentee owners accountable and follow through on penalties that this very council voted to impose. An informational hearing would bring this information to the residents of Baltimore City detailing what licensing and registration requirements there are for unoccupied vacant and abandoned non-residential properties, whether or not these unoccupied vacant and abandoned non-residential properties are complying with city code registration requirements, and guidance regarding how to address it long-term, not at the expense of Baltimore City residents. As neighborhoods witness businesses disappear at an alarming rate, we must put extra effort into investing in the maintenance and development of our communities.
Thank you, Councilwomen. Are there any additional co-sponsors? I see the hand raised of Chairman Stokes, Councilman Cohen, Councilman Burnett. This bill has been assigned to ECD. That wraps up our resolution introduction. You can find the consent calendar in Section 8 at the back of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? It's been moved in properly second. If it's in favor, please say aye. And if it's opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The motion carries, and the calendar is now approved. We will now move to bills on second reader. Before we do so, I'd like to recognize Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move you read short titles for second and third reader for the duration of the meeting.
Without objection, we will be in short titles for the duration of the meeting. Hearing and seeing none, we are in short titles. Madam Clerk, if you could go into rules and legislative oversight.
City Council Bill 22-0257, Police Department of Baltimore City, Police Districts Redistricting.
At this time, I'd like to recognize the Chair of the Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend Rule 1010 so that we can hold this bill on second reading until our meeting on September 19th.
Without objections, Rule 1010 will be suspended. Hearing and seeing none, the rule is suspended. This will be moved to our next meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chair. We'll now turn to bills on third reading for final passage. Madam Clerk, if you could please start with 22-189.
City Council Bill 22-0189, repeal of ordinances 07609 and 09139, Westport Waterfront Planned Unit Development. President Mosby, Councilmember Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance is absent, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill 22-0203, zoning conditional use conversion of single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R8 zoning district, 2223 Callo Avenue. President Mosby, Councilmember Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill 22-0219, Planned Unit Development Amendment Harbor Point. President Mosby, Councilmember Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, and Ramos.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This bill is also approved. Now, we're going to turn to committee announcements. Chairs, when you hear a committee, please proceed to any announcements that you might have. First up, we're going to go to Economic Community Development. Madam Vice President, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Economic and Community Development Committee would like to announce the following hearings, which will be held hybrid in the Clarence Dewburne Chambers at City Hall and online via WebEx. On October 4th, 2022, at 2:00 p.m., we will hear City Council Bill 21-0113, and that's the voting work session for the zoning code modifications. Sponsor the President for the administration, particularly the Planning Department. On October the 11th, 2022, at 2:00 p.m., we will hear City Council Bill 22-0204, and that's the vacant structures 311 complaint finds, and the sponsor is Council President. At 2:05 p.m., also on October 11th, 2022, we will hear City Council Bill 22-0106R. That's the investigational hearing for solar farming. Sponsor Councilman Burnett. And also on October 11th, 2022, at 2:10 p.m., we will hear City Council Bill 21-0081R, and that's also the code map and decision-making. Sponsor Middleton. And on October 25th, 2022, we will hear at 2:00 p.m. City Council Bill 21-0113, and that is also a voting work session for the zoning code modifications for the sponsor President for the Planning Department.
Thank you, Madam VP. Next up, we're going to Education, Workforce, and Youth. Chairman Stokes, no announcements. Next, we're going to HET. Chairwoman McCray, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Health, Environment, and Technology Committee will hold a hearing on Resolution 22-0103R, Investigational Hearing Switch Backup Expedited Reimbursement and Direct Assistance Program Feasibility Study on Wednesday, September the 21st, 2022, at 10:01 a.m. The committee will also hold a hearing on Resolution 22-0127R, informational hearing 988 Suicide and Crisis Lifeline on Wednesday, October 26th, 2022, at 10 a.m. Finally, the committee will hold a hearing on Legislative Oversight, LO22-0027, Quarterly Legislative Oversight Hearing, Department of Transportation on Wednesday, November 9th, 2022, at 10:01 a.m. The hearings will be held in the council chamber and also through WebEx. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Next up, we're going to go to PSO. Chairwoman Conway, the floor is yours. Thank you, Chairman. Next up, we're going to rules and legislative oversight. Chairman Schleifer, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend Rules 102 and 103 to allow announcement on a series of hearings on a resolution that was introduced at this meeting.
Without objection, we're going to suspend Council Rules 102 and 103. Hearing and seeing none, they're suspended. Mr. Clerk, Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you. The Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee will hold a hearing this Thursday, September 15th at 1:00 p.m. as an informational hearing for the E. coli positive tests over this past Labor Day weekend. And in case we don't get answers from DPW, as often happens at DPW hearings, we will have a follow-up hearings Thursday, September 22nd at 2:00 p.m. on the same topic. And in case we don't get answers at that hearing, we will have a follow-up hearing the following Thursday, September 29th at 2:00 p.m., again, on the Labor Day Weekend E. coli Positive Tests. The Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee will also hold a hearing on Bill Number 21-0114 on September 15th at 2:00 p.m. on Council Bill, I renounce Council Bill 0114, for building fire and related codes, vacant builders, receivers, failure to sell. And finally, the Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee will also hold a hearing this Thursday, September 15th on Council Bill 21-0125 at 1:30 p.m. for trespass towing revisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next up, we're going to Ways and Means. Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ways and Means Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, September 20th at 10 a.m. City Council Resolution 22-0100R, informational hearing judicial and REM foreclosure. Ways and Means will also hold a hearing on Tuesday, September 20th at 10:01 a.m. Council Bill 22-0220, study and report tax increment financing. Finally, Ways and Means will hold a hearing on Tuesday, September 20th at 10:02 a.m. City Council Bill 22-0249, prevailing wage revisions and petitions. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Are there any additional announcements from committee chairs? If not, we're going to turn to regular announcements. If you please raise your hand. Mr. Chair, Councilman Bullock, the floor is yours.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. So I do want to recognize the GBC Leadership Class that is with us this evening. For those of you who don't know, the Greater Baltimore Committee has a leadership class that happens every year.
If you could please stand for us real quick. All right.
Let's give a round of applause. So for those of you who don't know, again, we have a cross-section of nonprofit, business leaders, government folks, nonprofits, and again, across racial lines as well, to have a greater understanding of how our city works. Also, I am an alum of 2018. I know Councilman Ramos is also an alum, as is former Councilman and now Comptroller Bill Henry. So again, wanted to make sure that folks had an opportunity to come into the city's house, our house, and share time with us. So thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you, Councilman Bullock. Please do not be a stranger. This is not our building. It's your building. Everyone has a voice, and we enjoy when we have visitors. So again, thank you for coming out tonight. At this point, are there any additional regular announcements? Chairman Costello, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know that you and Councilman Bullock had mentioned earlier, you know, all the various council members on this body stepping up to the plate last week. I wanted to take a moment to acknowledge a friend of mine and a friend of many of us on the council, Derek Whiting, who's here with us today, who was out doing water distribution.
Stand up, Derek. Wait.
Derek is one of dozens of volunteers that were out there giving up their own personal time to make sure folks had clean drinking water, so really appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you. Thank you so much, Derek, for all your help. At this time, I'd like to recognize Councilwoman Ramos. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two announcements and then some moments of silence requests. First, I just want to let folks know that Mervau needs volunteers. We had a tragedy, as my colleague referenced earlier last week. It was very heartbreaking because Mervau is in my district. I was there the first day. It was such great energy. Young people were really excited to come back, and then there were no incidents during the week, and then this happens. Principal Lawrence has asked for volunteers to help with a community watch program that they would like to do, where our residents could come and welcome the students in, making sure that they're safe, filling them with love and inspiration, and then as they're leaving the campus. And so folks can, we need people from all over the city to come and join us as volunteers, and you'll see me out there a couple of times as well. The website is, you know, just Google Mervau, and you will be able to get to the website, and you can sign up for that. So thank you, Mr. President, for that. And then the second one is Hispanic Heritage Month starts this week, starts on the 15th. Hispanic Heritage Month goes from September 15th to October 15th, and it's done that way because there are a lot of our countries, Latin American countries, that have Independence Day celebrations during that time. So there's going to be a lot of activities in our city that are going to be uplifting our culture, and I'm hoping that everybody can attend. We will also have a special showcase next week regarding that as well. So just very excited to be able to lift up our culture during that time. Thank you.
No, thank you.
Moments of silence, but I can do that later. You want to do that now?
No, do it now.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. First moment of silence is for Jeremiah Brogdon. He was a young man killed outside of Mervau two weeks ago. Obviously, this is a terrible tragedy for his family and for the Mervau community, so I hope you'll keep all of them in your prayers. The second is for Mr. Henry Hughes, who was a resident in Chum, who was always very helpful, excuse me, Coldstream Homestead Montebello, who was always very helpful in the community. He also was, he took care of my house when I lived in Coldstream Homestead Montebello, so I'm very sorry to lose him. And also Louise Cuffy, who is the mother of Mark Washington, who's the Executive Director of Coldstream Homestead Montebello, a sudden loss, and so the family is certainly grieving. So we're hoping to keep everybody in our prayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos. That reminds me, Councilwoman Ramos, myself, and who else was there at the funeral? Oh, and Councilwoman Porter, I'm sorry, I sat right in a row behind you. We had the opportunity to go out and support our colleague, Councilman Torrance. If you know Councilman Torrance, he constantly talks about his story of growing up in East Baltimore, and you don't miss that story without missing the matriarch of his family, his grandmother. Unfortunately, she passed. That's why he is out today on an excused absence. So I want to make sure that we elevate his grandmother's name in the moment of silence as well, and it's Thelma Louise Booth Massenberg. That's Thelma Louise Booth Massenberg, with a G, Massenberg. Thelma Louise Booth Massenberg. Massenberg, yes. Are there any additional announcements? Hearing and seeing none, we'll turn the floor over to our amazing Vice President, Madam Sharon Green Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next meeting of the City Council will be held on Monday, September 19th, 2022, at 5:00 p.m., and may we have a moment of silence for Jeremy Brogdon, Henry Hughes, Louise Cuffy, Evelyn Sokoo, which is a pillar of, in the 5th District and known as Grandma, and also Thelma Louise Booth Maskenberg, and also the continued prayers for the now 246 homicides of 2022, and also our continued opioid epidemic and COVID pandemic in our city. Thank you.
There being no new business before the desk, this will conclude the 39th meeting of your 73rd term. This Baltimore City Council, Baltimore, we absolutely love you.